All right, it is 6:38 PM and I'm calling this laws and rules meeting to honor. First on the agenda is modifying resolution 113 of 2015, which is the creation of the Kingston Arts Commission. And we have our lovely Kit Potter here to speak with us.
Thank you.
I'm so just being on that screen. We could just sit in a wheelchair. It would still be a little bit out.
Thank you for seeing me today.
Yes, this is a request to modify the original resolution and see how you call. The resolution 113 of 2015 actually established it needs to notice mission and gave you its purpose then. But since then, there have been a lot of changes. You know, one we actually approved the formation of the Department of Arts and Cultural Affairs. And then master plan was adopted, arts and culture master plan was adopted in 22. And then public art policy and useful art collection plan was adopted in 2024. So the original one was actually created before we had a department of arts and cultural affairs. So the new resolution, the modifications that I have submitted on behalf of the Kingston Art Commission, pretty much lays out that it is now an advisory capacity and advises, it advocates, it recommends. It is my office system, if you will. And then also that it also oversees and recommends the goals and the structure of the newly forming public art committee that has a lot of things to do once we've created. And also exploring alternative sources of funding for the department. Instead of being dependent on one funding source to help to diversify. And that's pretty much it.
Yep. So this public art committee, can you explain like the composition of it?
Yes, the composition of the public arts community is in the actual public art, public art policy and municipal art collection plan. That was approved by the council back in July. And basically it convenes, it will convene every other month for issues related to municipal art collection plan. Project development, public art selection, panelist recommendations, project budgets, other programs and project related issues. And there'll be other subcommittees. This committee will be looking at first, you know, raising funds to inventory the existing collection. And also that registrar that would be doing that work would also assess the condition of the existing plan. And one collection that we're most concerned with is the work progress administration. We have 11 pieces in that collection and there is a need to repair. So I would hope that the committee's first recommendation would have that as priority. As you know, we also have statues and monuments. As you know, there's been controversy over some of the statues and monuments. This committee will have to be assembled to hear from the various groups their concerns and see how we can address those concerns. But first we have to figure out what actually belongs to the city of Kingston. And we really, yeah, some of this we really don't, we're not sure. As far as statues are concerned, we're not sure that some of these statues might belong to the county or other. And we're given permission to put on city property, whatever's put on city property, any of the new art. Because not too far down the road, because we're already hearing from the schools, arts organizations, individual artists who have the opportunity to apply for grants for temporary art projects. And they would love to have these displayed on city property. This committee would be looking at that, making recommendations to, well, first it comes to me. The process always comes to me and I would go to the newly established stat public art committee that the mayor has assembled, various departments that would be impacted or would have to be involved in any of these projects. All these departments giving the go ahead. And, you know, just setting the projects, making sure that there is funding for it, there's funding for the maintenance. Whether this is going to be temporary, permanent, goes to the committee or subcommittee. And then those recommendations would go to the Kingston Arts Commission. Once the Kingston Arts Commission hears, advises, it may go back and forth for a while, then it goes to the mayor.
Who would people this commission though?
Who would people? Two members from the Kingston Arts Commission, members of relevant expertise from the community, artists, art historians, conservators, administrators, business people, committee members. There's no, there's no, I don't remember how. But we don't want it to get to 15, right? It will complicate for that, but that's why I'm mentioning subcommittees. Because the subcommittees, you see here, for example.
Oh, I think I just finished, so, all right. Just wanted to get a peal. Why, why wouldn't this just go to the commission?
Directly to the commission?
Yeah.
The commission serves as an advisory capacity and voluntary capacity and there's a lot of work involved in digging into.
So these people are going to be paid?
No, they're volunteers as well. But there are committees of the Kingston Arts Commission to do a lot of the work at the Kingston Arts Commission. As a commission, it has a lot of responsibilities. So the committees that come out of the commission would start looking at these various areas.
So the public, this commission that you're talking about, that throws up questions in the committee, is a subcommittee of the Kingston commission?
As it's proposed in this room.
All right, but then you started talking about, you know, only two people from the commission.
Well, she wants to know the composition. So two, two members of the commission would serve on this committee and then from the public would be.
So it's not exactly a subcommittee of the arts commission? Because subcommittee of the arts commission would be members of the arts commission. So this is taking a couple, but also adding others.
Right.
And we don't know how many.
It could, no, it could, you know, grow depending on, you know, the level of responsibilities and the expertise that we need. But right now it looks like it should be looking at the municipal art collection. I'm gonna draw a poll out here. And this is all of the municipal art policy? Yes. I gave this a while ago, so I didn't quite. A lot of risus with the composition of the committees. And when I talk to who did spend a lot of time with individual council members. You have concerns?
I do, only because, and I don't, I think it's as big with the arts commission because I know how active artists are. And I think it's an artist after all. We have a hard time getting volunteers. So that, not the concept, but that was my thought. But I am less hesitant because I know the artist community here very well.
I have a lot of people who would be interested in serving. We started out.
If you would like to get them on the zoning board of appeals and ethics board, that would also be great too. Most of our, our boards and commissions have vacancies. So that is where my hesitation comes in, just asking, I don't, you know, asking more volunteer time. But I do know.
We have Public Art Policy Committee. And we had various organizations represented, the Dorsky represented, teachers, artists represented on this. They were in part in, and the creators of the public art policy and municipal art collection plan. Many of them have raised their hands, they're invested now, they want to stay put. And then I'm meeting with others from the two universities that have indicated interest and then others from various organizations.
Is there a residency requirement?
No. But we are, level of expertise. We are preferring, of course, people who live in the area or the surrounding areas. And also know Kingston and are active in Kingston. So, absolutely.
The only question I had, so the original one from 2015 speaks about the mayor appointing the nine members with approval, with the approval of the common council. And this does not have the language about the approval of the common council.
Not that, I turned that off. First one, so according to our charter, they have to be approved by the mayor.
Right.
So add it at the end of three.
Well, it says appointed by the mayor with the approval of the common council.
Right.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, I don't think we've.
So it doesn't have with the approval of the common council, this is appointed by the mayor. So I would like to see that language out in there.
Have we even found that because the mayor's appointed quite a few. You would have to, I would really request that you advise me on whether or not it should be required that the common council approves.
Well, according to what Michelle said, yes, it should. So I also didn't know that either, so I was in traffic. So we haven't been following the correct procedure.
I see.
You know, because we obviously are all just being in full position, which is all before all of our time here. Actually, it was before the mayor's time too. 2012.
Right, 2016.
So, and so normally our boards and commissions don't have that language. I think it's a good thing to have, I would support having it and then we could just, you know, keep track of making sure that we can follow it from now on, if that's what the committee wishes to change.
So we addition your dog, your dog?
Yeah, 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 that's great, yeah.
I'm on board.
You're on board with the exclusion?
No, that's keeping it as is.
Keeping it as is, without the advising consent.
Keeping it as is from 2015.
Okay, so putting that phrase.
So being into the 2000s.
It says, you know, advising consent or whatever.
The commission shop consists of nine voting members, section four, appointed by the mayor with the approval of the common council.
I want to take that question for Barbara or no? Can I take this for a second? Because, sorry, it is.
And then it goes down, it consists, section two now. It's in section two. Goes from section four to section two.
Yeah, maybe I don't remember trying. When Barbara was there, I was answering faster, but it was, it could be okay.
Sorry, I, I can't hear what you were saying completely, Andrea, but I think I heard you say ask Barbara.
Yeah, well, I was gonna look it up, but. Yeah, well, I was gonna look it up, but if you know the answer without me looking it up, even better. So Michelle pointed out that the previous resolution, so the law of the land, so to speak, is that the members of the Arts Commission are acquainted by the mayor with the approval of the common council.
Okay.
And so according to our charter, of course, boards and commissions, our members are acquainted by the mayor. We all, I think, like the language of the approval of the common council, can agree, right?
Yes.
But is approval the correct word to use? Because that would, it would be with advisory, something like that, all right.
Advising consent, all that going around.
No, not advise, not advising consent, because that's, advise, or in, after consultation with.
All right.
Would be the best approach.
Yeah, because it is still the mayor's authority and the way this is worded is he can't authorize without our approval, that was going in with our charter. But this wasn't, and this was against the charter, so we want to add in language that isn't against the charter. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right.
So that's, you want a motion?
Thank you, Barbara.
You want a motion to adopt this with the addition of.
We could just change, we don't need to go through a motion. Michelle can be.
Yeah.
So the language is appointed by the mayor and consultation with.
Oh.
With the common council.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense, Barbara?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I, yes, I thought we had closed it. And I didn't realize I was coughing with my microphone on, so sorry.
We might have a pretty early in the morning.
To what?
Let's say you gotta get a pretty early in the morning.
Yeah, right. Creation of Kingston Arts.
And I will say that the Kingston Arts Commission worked, put in many hours, working with kit, you know, to turn this into something that everybody on the commission approved. So they did, they did their job.
Do we have a full body on the commission?
Yes.
Yeah, and the last event was really fabulous, so generous, all the art downstairs, except a lot of life. Yeah, we, yeah, we get that one removed, it scares us.
It doesn't have to be brutal.
You walk down and there's like, someone's there.
Somebody left their baby.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna read the resolution. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the modification to Resolution 113 of 2015, authorizing the creation of the Kingston Arts Commission as attached. Can I get a motion? Any discussion?
Well, how will you insert that language?
I wrote it on.
Oh, you, oh, I see.
And then I wrote as attached and then she'll go.
And then it goes to either Lisa or Janet and they make it pretty for us, pretty illegal.
What's in is thank you for this work, thank you for moving this forward.
Thank you, yes, thank you so much. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone approves? Passes four zero. Her name's not here. All right, thank you, have a good night, gentlemen.
Here's what we all know, maybe.
Yeah.
I'm glad that you checked. Oh, once, sometimes I've forgotten to actually check.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right.
You make it easy.
Thank you. All right. All right, so under, we're gonna move on to old business. The volunteer men's museum lease agreement is still not ready, so we're going to keep that tabled. Then we have support for the lower, so the stream management, Kristen Wilson still is supposed to come, so if everybody's okay moving support for the Hudson Valley Power Authority. So. So this came before us last month, this is the state legislature assembly, Senator Henchy introduced it with Assemblymember Schreppah for the Hudson Valley Power Authority, so this is just a resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to pass it and for the governor to sign it. So this doesn't go into detail about what the bill is, but more about, you know, the unfair practices of Central Hudson. So I'm sure there's a lot about the bill that will end up getting changed and deliberated and all many, and maybe it takes some time. So there were a couple of typos. So that I corrected them, but nothing else has been changed. So I sent everybody a copy of the changes that are just here, they're just minor typos. All right, any questions?
I will say that it was great to have the Assemblywoman come and speak to us and answer questions, because if there were questions that came up, I thought she answered them very well, she set around the bill.
Yeah.
And I read the bill, I also read the bill. And it goes into a lot of detail that wasn't meant to hear and it seems like a really good starting point for the special new style of bill, so I'm happy to support this resolution.
All right, so I'll read it. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, calling upon the New York State Legislature to pass and to Governor Kathy Hopel to sign the Hudson Valley Power Authority Act A10332S9534 of 2024. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
I'd say briefly that the issues that I brought up with the Assemblywoman are first of the bill. I think there's.
Great, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody approves? All right, passes four zero. Elisa?
Yes?
Hi, so there were some typos in the version of the Hudson Valley Power Authority Resolution, so I'll send you the updated Word copy.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi. That's in time, I like this. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution in support of the Lower Esopis Stream Management Plan. And Emily Hauser from CAC was unable to be here, but, so she sent Kristen and Mary McNamara from the Esopis. Water, I'm sorry, Lower Esopis, yeah. Okay.
Oh, once. So I'm Deputy Director of the Planning Department, Ulster County. We completed the development of the Lower Esopis Creek Management Plan in 2024, which was May of 2024. And it has, I think, over 50 implementation projects that it recommends to improve the ecosystem, water quality, access and enjoyment of the Lower Esopis Creek. And we have been circulating this plan among the municipalities along the Esopis and asking the municipalities to adopt the, or adopt a resolution in support of the plan. Ultimately, we'd like to see this plan be recognized and sort of co-owned by all municipalities along the creek. The Ulster County Planning Department facilitated the development of the plan, but we aren't necessarily going to be facilitating the implementation of the plan. The implementation of the plan really needs to be completed by many, many different actors over many years, including municipalities, but also not the profit agencies and community groups. And there's several volunteer projects related to Kingston, City of Kingston.
It could be the caretakers of the plan?
The county? No, so. This is, they're passing it off to. Yeah, the other thing is that it, you know, that it's, I guess you could say that caretakers of the plan are the Lower Esopis Creek Advisory Council, but, you know, on the Lower Esopis Creek Advisory Council, we have community members like Mary McNamara, but the county, the county is involved, Soil and Water, Ulster County Soil and Water Conservation District, the DEP is involved in that council, so it's, you know, really, I think, you know, community and municipality and agency effort.
Self-directed Word paper.
And how many municipalities, I'm forgetting because I didn't get it, but how many municipalities fall in, would be part of this plan?
There's nine, nine.
Right?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Oh, seven, well, like seven, okay.
For the corridor, for the Lower Esopis.
For the Lower Esopis corridor, okay.
And I represent the town of Sawgities as one of the seven. So the City of Kingston is an important part of it and the Kingston Esopis Waterfront Plan is just one of several that were mentioned in the resolution, in the supporting resolutions. So it's a hard-earned, it's been a long haul and at the moment, showing the picture of the Lower Esopis access is, is, yeah, it's not a great exit. But, but Ulster County Planning Department, especially Kristen Wilson, has just been amazing at helping us be independent, but still have framework. So I hope the county is not going too far away, but what it's spreading, it's spreading the responsibility. And I know your face, but I'm sorry, I don't remember who you are, but, yeah.
I'm Mr. Four, I'm Bob Madison, I'm six, all of them.
And just will also mention that we are in the midst of working with the Soil and Water Conservation District to hire a watersheds coordinator, so that, that was one of the recommendations in the plan and we were able to utilize some of the funding from the DEP Order on Consent Funds for environmental benefit projects in the watershed, some of that we're able to dedicate to this watersheds coordinator. And then the county also put in half of the funding for the watersheds coordinator, so that coordinator will have about 50% of their time focused on the Lower Esopis and then another 50% on the Walkeel and the Title Roundout. For the entire.
The entire Roundout?
Yeah.
And that person will work for.
They will work for the Ulster County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Yeah, so our CAC gave a lot of comments, it's good. I hope everybody was, all the municipalities were able to be as involved.
I don't know that, well, probably Mary's. Mary is one of the most active members on the Lower Esopis Creek Advisory Council, but some of the other municipalities just went ahead and got funded without too much comment. I think we have, actually, we're still missing, is it Town of Marlboro, town?
I believe they're getting there.
Yeah. So, well, we have Town of Ulster, Town of Olive, Sawgity Village and Town of Sawgities.
So you're one of the.
Yeah.
You're helping anyway.
Great, great, and who's hosting the website?
Uh, it doesn't. Uh, the county.
Oh, that's the county.
Yeah, it's on our GIS hub website.
Okay, okay.
Where these, these are.
Those exist, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the county will continue to host the website for the plan and will still be involved, it's just that we can't be the sole implementers or really.
Funders.
Yeah.
Talking about funders. So, so what, where, where, what is, what is the expected overall project cost?
Millions and millions and millions of dollars. There is not a total project cost for the entire, for all of the projects listed in the plan. You know, so for example, one of the projects listed in the plan is the Kingston Esopis Waterfront Plan, which actually is included in your recent award for, from the DOT, from the Department of State for the LWRP, they included the Esopis. So I don't remember what that award was, but let's just say $200,000 for that planning process and it'll include the Esopis and then who knows, so come up with a plan for the waterfront behind Hammerford, I have no idea, you know, it could be millions of dollars. So there, there isn't a total project cost for all of the implementation.
I should have been more specific, if you were to break down each of the participants, I'm sure there must be a cost associated with, say, Sawgities or City of, City of Kingston.
No, no.
It's just one project.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not really done, done like, in, in the planning process, do, did we put a dollar, did we put expenses?
On the website, it was like connected to each.
Yeah, we have, you know, low cost, higher cost items, but some of them are like review septic systems in a whole municipality, right, that are maybe a higher cost project. Others are like do an educational program.
So these will be from state funding, is that where you're expecting it to come from as opposed to federal?
Well, so we do have, currently, well, we need, not Kingston, but the community collectively has the, the, the DEP had an order on consent. Because of the.
Turbidity.
Turbidity that was released from the Esopis River into, into the Lower Esopis. And that, as a result of that, they had to provide, was over $2 million, but the, $2 million of funding that they provided, they provided funding for this plan. They also provided funding for things like the USGS gauge on the Esopis, but that, right now, we have 200, $2 million in environmental benefit funds for the Lower Esopis. And so we are, that's going to be administered by the Hudson River Foundation and we are currently working with them to develop a grant application process. That's where some of the funding is coming from the Watersheds Coordinator and then they will develop a grant application process that municipalities like Kingston or nonprofits along the creek can apply for projects that are in the implementation plan.
This would go on for years and years.
Yeah, yeah, this is a long, this is a long term plan.
So essentially, this is preliminary, this sets the stage for the municipalities to then. This sets the stage for the municipalities to then refer back to the plan as they go forward to raise money from whatever source they can to address these issues. But it identifies the issues that need to be addressed.
Yeah, it essentially is like an existing conditions inventory, and then identifying projects that would help to improve the existing condition.
But it doesn't, it's not gonna leave anybody in the environmental processing or the associated stuff of implementation of projects, is that correct?
No. No, so if you're, then you're doing a large.
It's not gonna position there of environmental.
Yeah.
It's more like a roadmap for what needs to be done.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's the planning document.
Yes.
The roadmap. Gives direction, and then gives some focus, as opposed to unorganized.
No, it's important, it's important.
Yeah.
And funders look for that, you know, they look for plans to see that it's part of an overall concept that's been researched and studied, so, yeah.
And so supporting the resolution shows you're, the City of Kingston is aware of the plan that you, you're doing a thumbs up. You haven't formally adopted everything in it, but you understand it with a resolution that it's a general, in general, a good idea. And the fund, the $2 million, is, is hope that it's just seed money. And it doesn't, it doesn't go to just one or two projects. I guess the hope is three years, maybe a little longer, for that fund to exist, to help make it easier to get planning money. And the, and the first priority will be water quality. And recreation is important, but the funding is, the highest priority will be improving water quality.
We think of it as, I, I think of it as a little bit like gold in the sense that it can be used to leverage other CFA dollars. And so, you know, with any, I'm sure always pretty CFA application or resolutions, there's a match from the image of the municipality has to come up with itself. But this could, that's, that could be the 20% match for a water project. Really enable the municipalities to take on something.
And, and even though there's roughly 50 projects, the hope is that they'll grow, that it's not static. That there's a plan, there's some baseline projects, but that, that this is foundation building for helping the Lower Asofa get going, you know, and heal.
Yeah, and our environment has not been static, so who knows what's to come.
I mean, the releases only started in 2010. Before that, it was 95 years of no releases. And now, the releases were not great, but last July, they said the releases would be more respectful and that they wouldn't release over a certain degree of turbidity. One of the projects that's mentioned, not, not in the online one, but in the spreadsheet, is Asofa's Corridor Greenway. There would be water trails, land trails, alternative transportation, and as many waterfront access spots as possible. And so again, one of the focuses has been the City of Kingston going north to the Town of Ulster, and ideally even to the business park there. So, so the City of Kingston, you know, is the heart, is the heart of the Asofa's. And the stockade area where the Asofa's was first accessed is so important. So, and your, your CAC is so important. And way, way back before he was mayor, Steve Noble was taking us on waterfront tours and, and water. He was an important part of the earlier iteration, the Lower Asofa's Watership Partnership, so.
You know, when I first started in 2020, there were some meetings about kayaking on the Lower Asofa.
Yes, and that's.
Yeah.
During COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And taking that.
We're hoping to get that going again. There's a couple of spots where the wood is soaked and up. And so at the moment, most of those spots have been minimized, and there's still one spot. And that's actually incorporated into a water trail. It's not mentioned specifically, but it is part of the plan. I think I at least mentioned it.
I thought I saw something.
The water trail is mentioned.
But removing the large wood.
I saw something about that, too.
I didn't, sorry.
I saw something about the, yeah.
So we've met three times now to talk about that, just informally. And again, the, the local waterfront revitalization program that the City of Kingston got, that was fantastic. I think it's over $200,000.
Yeah.
I think it was three. And, and it mentions public access on the Asofa's, so continuing the Hudson and the Roundout. But, and if I may, just, it's so exciting, the idea that the county is helping about 50% of this new Watership Coordinator position that can help give more technical assistance to the cities. So the consent order mentioned all seven corridor communities because they've been impacted in a negative way, so. So thank you for letting us.
Thanks for coming.
Present this to you.
All right, so everybody good with the reading resolution? Okay. So this is a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, in support of the Lower Asofa's Stream Management Plan. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second by two. Okay, any discussion? It's all great work. I look forward to it moving forward and being implemented and funded in the next four years as well, all my funding coming in.
Maybe everyone wants to know more about history. Mary is your person in everything along the Asofa's.
I said you can help too.
Or not.
Did you, did you know that Botley, you know, do you know about Botley Sagerties? Yes. Okay, so you know that he used the Asofa's as, was it like? Like a hydro. Yes, a hydro. And it was all that, that lead that was dealt. Light lead, you know, although they haven't proven that it's still there. But yes. Yes, very interesting. We had a lecture about it this last week. Right, it's history, it's past history and current history and future.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Thank you for your presence.
Thank you.
Now we can fix that thing. I'm Adam for that. Something will be solved.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, I've worked out the red. Yeah. All along, we got so quick. Maybe you're a plumber. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I? Attention. There, where's the? Oh, did I go wrong? Uh-huh.
I didn't.
No, we want to slide some. I just packed it up.
Yes, you read it though.
I checked the box.
There you go. Don't forget we are meeting tomorrow. Yes.
No, this is, this is going to be the Common Council meeting as well.
Yes, so it's scheduled for September 7th and 7:30. If the committee goes over.
It'll be later.
It'll be later. The committee ends early, we don't, okay, next Thursday. Okay. Yeah, we go early.
You said send my phone to be here, and so we.
Did you sign it?
No. I think somebody did.
He's packing up.
Did you?
No, yes, I'm gonna get a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, all in favor? Thanks, Alisa.
Bye. Thank you. Good night. Good night.